Okay, so this is actually a nice subset of what we just went over with you. If you look at their accountability 2012, what did ESEA flexibility approval do for us? Well, remember again, it's based on three principles and we went over those with you a little bit, just a little while ago. We've got the Career in College Ready standards. We have the differentiated accountability and supports. And then the third principle is focusing on the educator effectiveness. The piece of that that most impacted the districts immediately was obviously the differentiated accountability and the supports because that's what we had to rush to get out to give the districts enough time to start planning on what, on how they were going to get their plans together for the school year. And as we did the differentiated accountability and the supports, we remember we introduced two new metrics in August, just a couple of weeks ago. That was the focus schools, those were new. None of the districts that had been involved in following the ESEA flexibility request knew that that was going to be a new type of school. And then the reward schools. The PLA, the persistent low achieving, they've seen before, it's just now that they are going to be called the priority schools. Did not impact AYP, I think Vanessa mentioned that earlier, on the priority schools. And it did not impact AYP or ED YES. And if you remember, we're not changing ED YES, we are waiting for that to go through the legislative process to see if that is going to be changed. But the big news for districts is it fundamentally shifted how the consequences are assigned, that they're no longer tied to AYP, that now it really gets tied into those new schools called the priority and the focus. And then Linda, I think, did a very good job of kind of going through how we completely revised these systems of support such much more tailored to the needs of, the unique needs of districts. So with that, Vanessa and Joseph are going to walk through the accountability timelines and give you an overview of what the results showed that we released just a week or two ago.
Okay, so we did release six things two weeks ago. That's up from three last year, so, but to John's point earlier, hopefully we'll get some consistency year over year and not go up if we're going to, not do more if we're going to do any more. We released AYP. I will talk about this in greater detail, but it was the original system. It did have new targets to accommodate our new cut scores. So we had this one-year lag issue before we could fully implement our ESEA flexibility, but we also had the challenge of new cut scores on our assessments. So the old targets under the previous AYP would have been inaccurate with our new cut scores. So we negotiated with US Ed using the accountability workbook process for kind of a one-year reset of targets. Education YES, it was the same general structure. It can't be modified until there is movement on the Michigan School Accreditation System that that is the, that's our modification of the ED YES system that we've submitted to the legislature. So something needs to happen there in order to break the logjam on education YES. Until that point, we have to implement the system as it currently is.
And just to be clear, the modification to the accreditation system is essentially looking at what are the priority schools. So it would, if it were to pass, it would be aligned, it would be the same thing as priority schools, or very near the same thing as the priority schools.
We released our statewide top-to-bottom ranking. All schools got a ranking. This was the same as last year. This was the same metric as last year. Last year, we released it as purely informational. This year, it was the undergirding of priority focus and reward schools, the three sublists. So what changed and what stayed the same? And it was an interesting year for accountability in that we had the impacts of ESEA flexibility on top of non-impacts of ESEA flexibility. So trying to keep track of what changed and what stayed the same was challenging. But what was different were the new AYP targets. Again, I just spoke about that, that we negotiated with US Ed to reset those. We did make changes to district AYP. The previous district AYP calculation really lacked in transparency. Kids were getting lost in that system. It was also rather complicated. So looking forward to where we're going with the scorecard and trying to get more transparency in the system, we negotiated with US Ed to make a change to district AYP. We treated it as one large school as opposed to three levels. US Ed required that we hold schools and districts accountable on their graduation rate, not only for all students, but in each of their subgroups. So since 2007, we've been reporting subgroup graduation rates, but this was the first year that AYP status was determined based on meeting the 80% graduation target in all of your subgroups as well. That was a big change for districts and schools. And one, again, that was US Ed required. When you couple that change with the change to district AYP, again, brought a lot more transparency to graduation rates at the district level. So where previously a district may have not been meeting graduation rate targets at the district level, but could mask that with high performance in their elementary level or their middle school level, by treating the district as one group, it brought those graduation rates to light. You'll see that in the results. The PLA schools, we renamed them priority schools, and they were the top, or the straight bottom 5% of the top-to-bottom ranking. So gone were the pools and tiers of the PLA of the first two years, which I think was a welcome change for everyone. And we took the straight bottom 5% of the top-to-bottom ranking.
You know, I just want to mention that Skubik kind of surprised us here one day and put me on the spot about, well, it's only a terminology change, priority, persistently low. First of all, you can see it's a lot more than a terminology change. But I wouldn't want to say that the terminology isn't important. I mean, if you're improving and you're working your tail off, and a lot of these schools are, and then they're called persistently lowest achieving, you have just demoralized the whole staff to a degree that it, they start to freeze. So priority, you know, I guess to a reporter with no malice, he's a good guy, but looks like just superficial, it's not. That in itself, I think, is a big difference. And then when you add all the rest of this, it's just, it's icing on the cake.
Our focus and reward lists were new. And then as far as staying the same, the structure of AYP, ED YES, and we still identify lowest performing schools, but as Superintendent just mentioned, the methodology was different, but the nomenclature is different as well, which puts the focus more on where we want it to be, that these schools are a high priority for us versus they're low achieving as area of focus. There will be one more transition step through this next year. We'll be fully implementing that color-coded accountability scorecard that this body has seen several times through the ESEA flexibility application process. And we also will continue to produce the reward and priority and focus lists in 2013, as well as the statewide top-to-bottom ranking. As far as for this year, our statewide top-to-bottom ranking, again, it is the same calculations. And just a reminder, that ranking, actually, the guts of that ranking are achievement, improvement in achievement, and achievement gaps. We have fundamentally believed as a department that a school needs to work on those three areas. They need to have high achievement, they need to do it for all of their students, and they need to improve over time. This ranking does privilege growth and movement in a way that previous metrics probably did not in the same way. It detects change in student scores in a more detailed way. It also includes graduation rate for high schools. I think we've already talked enough about our priority schools, lowest 5% of the top-to-bottom ranking. It is now, the other thing to point out is now it's required by ESEA flexibility as well as by state law. So we were ahead of the curve in some sense of other states, that we had been doing this for two years. And then US Ed said, we need to do this, so luckily, we were well-positioned to say, well, we actually have a way to do this, we've been doing it. But now it's part of our federal accountability as well. Focus schools are brand-new. These are the schools with the largest achievement gaps, based on a composite of all achievement gap measures. So we took all the achievement gap data for schools, who got a top-to-bottom ranking, and we ranked them based on the size of that gap, and identified the focus schools are the 10% with the largest gaps. This was required by ESEA flexibility, but we also believe it presents an important opportunity for our state to call to light, as John said a moment ago, a different bucket of schools who perhaps had not been really identified through the AYP system. Our reward schools are also new, although again, I would say this is a place where Michigan was ahead of the curve at the request of the State Board of Education to start looking at beating the odds two years ago now. So we had been doing a beating the odds, who's doing a good job, let's not just talk about the bad, let's talk about the good, sort of approach for two years, and then US Ed again said, reward schools are good. They identified two ways to be rewarded, high performing, that's the top 5% of the top-to-bottom list. High progress are those making a lot of improvements, the top 5% of the improvement metric of the top-to-bottom. And then beating the odds is still part of this. So we had an opportunity, again, to align state initiatives with our federal accountability. AYP, it's still a, schools either make AYP or do not make AYP, still that dichotomous decision that we'll be moving away from in the color-coded scorecard. But the sanctions and consequences are not tied to this. So that was the big change for this year. We still published it along the old system, but it, what got you into the consequence pipeline was being a priority or a focus school, consequence and support pipeline, was being a priority or a focus school, not your AYP status. Then ED YES is still your letter grade. I think we've covered this in pretty good detail, but just the scorecard, it will have those differentiated targets. That's one thing we're very excited about, that schools will be asked to move forward in a way that's specific to where they're starting. Subgroups have the same targets for the school overall, that's another way to get at gap closure. And we have a new way to do safe harbor that's a little bit more stable and important for improvement, we think, than the current methodology. Okay. So we did just want to point out some of the resources we put out. One of the key goals of the Bureau of Assessment Accountability and the department as a whole was to include professional learning as one of our pillars of accountability. Because accountability without professional learning is just a designation that you really don't want to get. So you may really not want to get it still, but we'd like you to be able to learn from it and use the data as an important part of understanding your strengths and weaknesses as, as well as a school and a district. So I just say these are up here, or these are out there in case any of you want to reference them, or if you receive questions from constituents. We do have PowerPoints and frequently asked questions and lookup tools and ad glance overviews, policy analysis, et cetera, et cetera. So we hope that people can take advantage of them. And we also have shortened web links that are easy to, like, type in, and they're in your PowerPoint just for your reference. We just wanted to make sure you were aware of these resources.
And before you go on, one of the things that we did find, every, every school that was identified as a priority focus or reward school received a phone call from the Department of Education before the designation was made public. And what really helped those schools was essentially the lookup tools and these resources that were made available. There's a lot of information in there that can help schools identify, you know, why did I end up on this list? Where is it that I need to improve? If I improve here, will I be able to get off the list? So there's a lot of diagnostic information that schools can use. And that really helped people deal with the designation in a much more productive way in terms of, okay, we've got this designation, now where do we go?
And as another example, you know, at risk of embarrassing or modest people, but where these guys went above and beyond. I mean, it is always the, it's just part of culture a little bit, but there's the feeling there's a bureaucracy that labels us, but not the bureaucracy that helps us. And you're seeing lots of evidence today of where that's happening, including this. This is above and beyond what most state departments have done to try to help districts right out of the block.
We really encourage all schools too, to look at their top-to-bottom ranking and the diagnostic tools there, keeping in mind that priority schools are 5% and focus schools are 10%. That leaves 85% of our schools where their AYP status and their top-to-bottom ranking are their core diagnostic data. And using that in these years before you are one of the lists is going to be critical to getting ahead of these designations that may not be as desirable. So we would like to walk you through some of the results, and you may be relatively familiar with all of this already since we, you know, the release was two weeks ago, but we'll hit the high point. 2,866 schools received a top-to-bottom ranking. That is not all of our schools. Some schools are too small, they do not have enough full academic year students. Just a reminder that all accountability metrics only take into account students who have been in the school for a full academic year, that's three count days. This is a protection for schools, so they're not held accountable on the proficiency or achievement levels of a student they haven't had time to influence. But for some schools with a very mobile population or very small schools, they may not have enough to qualify for the ranking. There were no changes to this calculation, but we did account for the new cut scores. So anything in the ranking that relates to cut scores was recalculated using the new cut scores. And it includes those four key components I spoke of earlier. We've really been encouraging, we've been working throughout the department actually to equip all of the offices to be able to talk with schools about this, pointing them to what is essential about this ranking, which is achievement, improvement, and gap. So there's, there are Z scores and there are things. But at the end of the day, it, if we can understand, if every school can understand what's their achievement, what's their improvement profile, and what's their gap, that's a long way toward using data to improve your decision-making. There are 146 priority schools in the state. This is the bottom 5% of the top-to-bottom ranking. We wanted to call this out and address this because this has been something that has been a concern in the field. There were some schools with 100% of their students who were considered students with disabilities, who ended up on all of the lists. Two of them are on the reward list, nine are on the priority schools list, and six are on the focus schools list. So that's, at face value, causes some questions. Why are these schools here? This seems odd. These schools are not shared educational entities. Those are our consortium schools that serve students from multiple districts who don't get a ranking. They had enough full academic year students to receive an accountability designation, but most importantly, in the ranking at its core, the first thing we do is compare like students to like students. And the way we do that is we compare scores on alternate assessments to the scores of other students who took the same alternate assessment. So for instance, thinking about our My Access suite of assessments, students who take participation, which is our assessment for students with the most severe cognitive disabilities, their scores compared to other students who took participation statewide. So it's an apples-to-apples comparison, at the risk of the laboring the apples-to-apples thing, it's an apples-to-apples comparison of students to students. We create a standardized score out of that, and that's what goes into the achievement ranking. And so that's why you actually see these schools showing up on all three lists, because we really are comparing the similar students to similar students.
So for example, these two reward schools, these are essentially special education centers where the students are scoring very high compared to other special education centers. So really, these students are having some really positive outcomes compared to the students who are being served in other special education centers. Priority schools, these are schools where the students, with these students with disabilities are scoring very low compared to students, very similar students with disabilities. So it's not that we are comparing these students, we're not comparing a student who takes My Access to a student who takes MEET. I think that's the real important, that's the real important message to take away from this.
And if I could not only encourage the board, but the rest of the audience, as much as we've written this, as much as we've talked about it and presented, you can see from the media accounts of a lot of this that there's still a misunderstanding. And the more we can help people understand it's apples and apples, I take it at face value that people just misunderstand it. It's frustrating a little bit because we need as much help as we can get to help folks understand, this isn't comparing, as Joseph termed, your special ed center to your local elementary school. And I think it's not only fair, it's great that those schools who, for instance, are on the reward list can be kind of a beating the odds school for others to find out, what are you doing? How did you, what are you doing different than what we do? And then it, it'll account for significant gains for kids in these other schools, I think, at the same time. But that's one where, if I had to pick one, that's the hardest one to communicate, that seems to be it. Mr.?
Maybe I should know this, but now, do we have the bottom 5% of high schools and then the bottom 5% of elementary, or is it elementary and then middle and high, or the whole, bottom 5% of all schools?
High schools are compared to other high schools, and elementary-middle schools are compared to other middle schools, all the way until that final percentile ranking. But then there, they're all put into one ranking, and it's the bottom 5% there of everybody.
So in essence, the, again, students who take MME are compared to students who take MME. Students who take MEET are compared to students who take MEET. So if you, so if you are a high school, you don't need to worry about the differences between the MME and the MEET because we're taking that into account.
One of the things we found with the old PLA methodology was because it had that high school requirement for one of the pools, it caused us to overrepresent high schools in that list, which, if that's your policy goal, then that's good, but that's not per se the policy goal of this. The original school improvement grant methodology, I think, wanted more high schools pulled in, but we don't, that's not maintained as a goal. So that's why they all come together at the end. And I do also want to notice as far, or note as far as these special education schools, the State Reform Office and the Office of Educational Improvement Innovation and the Office of Special Education have all started conversations with the Bureau and with each other to think about, again, those customized tailored interventions, what does a plan look like in each of these, these types of schools? It's not just about this, but we have looped in the Office of Special Education experts too, to make sure that the plan meets the needs of the school in a very tailored way. 98 of our priority schools are new this year. That is, in a lot of ways, you know, a function of taking the bottom 5% instead of the pools and the tiers. But 36 are on for their consecutive year, and 12 are on for their second consecutive So just to kind of show you where it distributes in the state, ISDs, the ISDs with the most priority schools, Wayne, Kent, Genesee, Oaklenningham, and Macomb. And then districts, Detroit has a lot of priority schools. Some of those schools are now in the EAA. Grand Rapids, Lansing, and Flint. Turning to our focus schools, there were 358 of them, spread across 176 districts and 47 ISDs. 23 of those are public school academies. Again, these schools were identified based on being the schools with the largest differences between the top 30% of their students and the bottom 30% of their students. It really did capture students, as we've done case studies and analysis, it captured students who were previously masked by traditional subgroup reports. So low achieving economically disadvantaged kids in a school with high achieving economically disadvantaged kids were being lost, because you would meet your target with your economically disadvantaged kids. Also, a lot of schools didn't meet the income on a lot of the racial and demographic subgroups. So students were being masked. Now, every school has a subgroup. We still report those traditional subgroups, and especially the accountability scorecard in 2013 will have a lot of information about those subgroups, but this gap is, is an achievement gap.
And just, maybe I'm repeating what you just said a little bit, but all the schools obviously have an achievement gap. By definition, your top 30% and your bottom 30%. This is the top 10% of all schools that have an achievement gap. So focus schools are not all schools that have an achievement gap, because all schools have an achievement gap. It's the top 10%. So I think that's even important to note as you hear from constituents about where they are. I mean, one would hope that you have a lesser achievement gap than others, and there's many that need to be, that's just an additional thought, clarification.
Yep. These are, again, the ISDs and the districts with many focus schools. I don't know if I'll read the whole slide to you, but just so you guys have a sense, again, of how this distributes across the state. So we wanted to address some of the hot topics that have come up with focus schools, some of the common, common concerns that we've heard raised by constituents as we've gone through this process of unveiling this metric. One common one is, well, we are a focus school because we have a gifted and talented program, because we allow schools of choice, because we have fill-in-the-blank type of kids. That one came a lot as we were developing this metric with stakeholders. We would hear, well, all my schools are going to be because we have, and then we would hear, we heard a number of reasons. Limited English proficiency, we have economically disadvantaged kids, we have black kids, we have white kids, we have whoever kids. We're, because we're high achieving, this is going to disadvantage us because we're high achieving. Or because my bottom 30% has only, it's going to be all my kids, blank kids. And again, we heard it different ways depending on who was, who was talking. We have spent a lot of time investigating the claims. We are not finding yet that the focus methodology disproportionately identifies any one group of schools. It's kind of an equal access metric, as far as we can tell. Or any one group of students. We identify a range of schools. So our encouragement to districts and schools, and actually the whole educational community is, let's not get caught up on blaming the metric, although we want to continue to have important discussions about the metric. You know, the metric has to be right to have the actions be right. But we are continuing those investigations, and in the meantime, let's, let's turn to what the data tell us about the performance of our bottom 30% students statewide, within districts and within schools.
So we've gone through a lot of the complaints that we've heard about the focus metric, and one of the complaints that we've heard about the focus metric is, you know, the schools that are identified as focus schools, that bottom 30% group is going to look different than the bottom 30% group in, in non-focus schools. And as you can, as you see this, you can see the percentages or the proportion of the students in each demographic subgroup that are in the focus school, bottom 30%, versus the non-focus school, bottom 30%. And there's not a lot of difference. So we're seeing that those bottom 30 subgroups are pretty much the same whether you're in a focus school or a non-focus school. It's just that in a focus school, they're doing worse. Another one that we had a question about is, are we disadvantaging high performing schools? And I'm going to talk you through this graphic.
Give you a pointer.
Yes. So in essence, if we were disadvantaging high performing schools, all of these red dots, which are the focus schools, would be clustered over here.
Just to note, the x-axis here is the top-to-bottom percentile rank. So the zero is, you know, a low percentile rank, 100 is high. And then going up the y-axis is that composite achievement gap measure. So the further up the y-axis you are, the smaller your gap, and the further down, the larger your gap.
Right. So in essence, what we're saying here, I'll start with these orange schools. These are the priority schools. These are schools that have a percentile rank of five or less, or of four or less, sorry. These red schools are our focus schools. The green schools here are the reward schools that are high achieving. These black dots represent schools that are high improvement schools. So one thing you can see here is that we have some, actually, pretty low performing schools that are reward schools. The question is why? Because they would have been priority before. They've made such tremendous improvements that they're out of that priority listing, and they are now considered reward schools because their improvement rates are pretty good. But in essence, what you would have seen here is if we were disadvantaging high performing schools by naming, just naming them focus schools, all of these red dots would have been clustered down in this area. They're not. What we see is we see a lot of low performing schools that also have sizable achievement gaps, very big achievement gaps, as well as mid-level schools in terms of their performance having large achievement gaps, and high performing schools that have large achievement gaps. One of the things to be clear about also is that there are some high achieving schools that do not have sizable achievement gaps. So it's not simply because you're identified as a high achieving school that you end up having sizable achievement gaps. Another one of the questions is, are bottom 30% groups in high performing schools actually high performing students? And in essence, what you can see is, these are essentially standardized student scale scores on the bottom. And this is the frequency, the y-axis is the frequency. So essentially, what you're seeing here is that if you're below a zero, on average, your students in the bottom 30% are scoring below state average. What we're seeing is that in focus schools, there are no focus schools where the bottom 30% group of students is scoring above the state average. In essence, in every school that has, that is a focus school, that bottom 30% group is scoring below state average. Okay, talk you through this one as well.
You don't need to explain this one, we get this one.
All right? Just kidding.
Your task is coming.
On the, on the x-axis, we have, again, the overall school percentile rank. On the y-axis, we have the percent economically disadvantaged. And you can see that the percentile rank of a school is associated with the percent economically disadvantaged in the school. We expect that that is going to happen because achievement levels are part of the top-to-bottom ranking. And achievement tends to be correlated with, with economic, levels of economic disadvantage. What we do know, however, is because we also include improvement and achievement gaps in the top-to-bottom ranking, is not a really strong correlation. What we're, what we would be looking for here is, if we are disadvantaging wealthy schools, we would see just this mass of red schools, focus schools, down in this area. We have focus schools represented throughout the economically disadvantaged spectrum. So it's not that we're disadvantaged wealthy schools either. We have wealthy schools that have large achievement gaps, we have very poor schools that have large achievement gaps, we've got mid-level schools that have large achievement gaps. And those distributions are very similar for focus versus non-focus schools. Same thing here, are we disadvantaging suburban schools? We've had people concerned that, oh, all your focus schools are going to be suburban. Well, again, you can see we've got a significant number of urban schools that are focus schools, a significant number of- a significant number of schools in towns and rural areas that are focus schools, and a significant number of suburban schools. So we're not simply disadvantaging suburban schools by identifying them as focus schools. Again, we had the question, are you disadvantaging high schools? We see very similar relationships between elementary and middle schools and high schools. If we were disadvantaging high schools, you would have seen much more of a clustering of schools, of red schools in this one. And are we disadvantaging non-diverse schools? That was another concern that people had. If we were disadvantaging non-diverse schools, we would see all of these red dots clustered over here. And we're not. Okay. And this one's really easy to understand, too. Something happened to the title here. On the x-axis, we had someone say, but the reason you're going to identify focus schools is because they have a wide variation in socioeconomic status within the school. If you have a wide variation of socioeconomic status in the school, we would expect there to be larger achievement gaps. Well, actually, that's not the case. What we did is we took the bottom 30% proportion economically disadvantaged minus the top 30% proportion economically disadvantaged, essentially as a proxy in how diverse is your school in terms of economic disadvantage. And we looked at the bottom 30% standardized scale score minus the top 30% standard, average standardized scale score, and it's essentially, this is the gap on this side, this is how diverse your school is on this side. And this R squared up here says you can explain 9% of the size of the gap in the school by how socio-economically diverse the school is. So in essence, we're not disadvantaging schools with wide variation socioeconomic status either. So we thought that it would be, you know, really important to be able to discuss all of these issues with you because these are the things that have come back to us saying, ah, but you're disadvantaging us for X, you're disadvantaging us for Y, we're a focus school because we are high achieving. And we have seen some things where people have said, well, whenever you have students who are as high achieving as ours, we are going to have large achievement gaps. Well, that's actually not the case. So the focus, the focus methodology actually is not picking up a certain type of school. It is simply picking up schools that have large achievement gaps, whether they're high achieving, whether they're low achieving, whether they're economically diverse, whether or not they're racially diverse, and so on. So we're not picking up schools simply because they have X type of student. We're picking them up because they have large achievement gaps.
And my hope, if I may say so, for my colleagues, the 500 superintendents, is those that, I believe with no malice, ran out because they had a reporter in their face the next day and maybe used some of these issues as the reason. I would hope they would take a step back and say, based on the evidence, I'm realizing we do have some issues and we're going to deal with them, and then not be in this spot next year. Otherwise, you know, in fairness, this is a little bit like, what are the stages of grief and all that? I mean, some of this is going on and it should be understood. It's the same thing that the so-called former persistently lowest achieving schools had to go through a few years ago. You know, what do you mean? I had no idea. So it's understandable, but I do think there's a way to take a deep breath and step back and say, you know what, that seemed that way, but apparently it's not quite that and we're going to take steps to change this for it. Please.
But the one concern that I've heard, and if you could go to slide 22. I think, oh, I'm sorry. I think, you know, it's great that we're highlighting these things. I think it's really important that we're demonstrating that there can be gaps even in very high performing schools. But the concern that I have and that I've heard from others is when you look at the lower right-hand quadrant of that, the expectation that these schools now have to send a letter out to all of their parents telling them, you know, giving them the option of sending their kids to another school, when in fact, the school that they're at may be a very high performing school, almost seems counterintuitive, you know, because they could essentially be encouraging parents to send their kids to a school that doesn't perform as well. And I think that's kind of, it's not so much the highlighting of it, it's the ramification that comes after that that could be, I mean, we could be doing the opposite of what we really want to do.
I mean, one, please add to this, the one thing ironically is that less than a percent of the parents have ever chosen choice when given it. But please, I should let you comment first.
There is, I'll use my personal situation. My children are in focus schools. And I think I would want to be able to look at whether or not my students are in that bottom 30% because the bottom, in focus schools, the bottom 30% students are really getting a very different experience than the top 30% students. So in the top, that top 30% of students may be getting a very high quality education, but those bottom 30% of students are getting a very different type of education in those, in particular in focus schools. And I think as a parent, I would, I would want to be able to look at that and say, you know, are my students being served well by, in the school? And I may come to the conclusion, yes, they are, I'm going to stay, I'm not going to worry about choice and transportation. But I think the issue is being able to say, for the students who are not necessarily being served well by a particular school or in a particular location, being able to have that kind of choice, even though we do know that very, very few students ever do actually take advantage of that choice in transportation.
But just as a follow-up, though, you're in a position where you could actually make that pretty, you know, easily for you. Most parents are just going to get a letter saying, your kid's in a focus school, here's your options. How are they supposed to determine where their kid falls, you know, based on just a letter like that? Are we actually getting, because I agree with you, I think parents should be able to assess where their kids fall into that scope, but they don't all have, you know, PhDs and, you know, statistics.
And, excuse me, the letter that the parents will be given, that will be sent out, will be very generic and just indicate that if they do want to make that choice, they should call their school. Because that gives the school building an actual opportunity to say, here is what we do and here, so they get much more of an explanation. So it's not just a rampant, this is all going to happen. It really leaves it up to the individual parent to say, okay, if my school is that, then do I want to go in and talk to the principal or some of the teachers to find out what does that actually mean for my school?
We've also been, it's part of why we provided, like, the Joanne Nuroff team pulled together an individualized lookup screenshot of their, their top to bottom ranking, and they're trying to help them. So the letter can go out saying, here's some things we're very strong in and here's some things we've been identified, to give a more nuanced picture to parents of, you know, this has helped us identify an area that we need to work on. Here's our plan, but here's some things we're doing well. So to equip the schools, to equip the parents with some of the information to make that choice. It's been, I know this is something excellent schools Detroit's taken on as well, but the challenge of equipping parents with data is something that, or with information, not just data, but information is important because a lot of parents, it's harder to find information. So we hope the schools will take that opportunity as well.
Nancy, and then Eileen.
First of all, I'd like to, I'd like to say I agree with you wholeheartedly. And one of the reasons I agree is from experience. When I was on the local school board for years, we had this situation in the school that I was in. And our parents were not silent with the lowest 30%. In fact, it was, there, it was only the lowest 13%. But they still were very vocal about what, how can I be going to this school district with this reputation, with this amount of high achieving kids? And why isn't my kid achieving? What's wrong here? And it took that kind of action on the part of the parents and then on the part of the school board to push that district to really address this issue. So while I understand that you want to make certain the parents are given the tools that they need to make good decisions, and I would agree that some of them will stay and some of them won't, I think this is so important for parents to have this information because I've seen what happens when they don't. And when they don't have anyone being responsive to that lowest portion and only celebrating, in our case, that top 87%, because heck, they're doing great, why should we worry about anything? So I think this is really a key piece of our really talking about all children being successful and all children having the ability, the capacity to be in a school system that can be successful. Are there some safeguards that are needed to make sure? Absolutely. But then that's, it's incumbent upon those local districts then to deal with this in a way that actually helps their students, doesn't harm them. And I think it's incumbent upon that same district to deal with parents, to help them understand what are good decisions, what aren't good decisions? What are good choices, what aren't good choices? What's good information and what can you do with it? But to not have this, I think would be just as wrong.
I'm thinking what I'm going to ask.
Oh, okay, great. Super.
Eileen, please.
For me, there's two fronts on this. One is the school finally getting, after almost 10 years of no child left behind, notification that their achievement gap is real and continuing and has not been addressed. And the teachers I know want to figure this out. The schools that I know want to figure this out. They're shocked to find out that it's still real because they, you know, were hoping it was getting better, whatever. But I have my fingers crossed that the education community will meet the challenge and that there won't be a lot of defensive behavior. For the kids involved, I too, I mean, my, Danny's former school is not a focus school, but I know far too many children, as the mother of a 12-year-old, who's, who are in the bottom 30% in schools. And Joseph's absolutely right, their educational experience is hugely different. And if they're a child of color, there's no comparison at all. I mean, it's just very bad. So we've been sending out letters, I was trying to remember when we started with the PLA schools, how long has it been that those schools were sending out letters saying that you could go someplace else or get tutoring?
A child left behind, 10 years.
It's 2003, yeah. So the difference here is that there are a lot of schools in that list now who are upper-middle-class schools who didn't expect to be there. And if Michigan is going to fix its awful achievement gap, this is the kind of information that they, they need to have to do it, and we are being responsible making that happen. I worry, though, like Cassandra, because I, was it, who was it that did the study that showed that, Michigan Future showed that about 20% of Detroit parents would stay with their school no matter what, even if their child wasn't achieving and the school was failing. So I don't know how we can address that better than we are, but people are working on it. And you can only have your fingers crossed that someplace between schools being responsible and parents learning enough to try and make sure their child succeeds, that there's a better focal point for kids right now, in the next two or three years on this. But this is a huge and important first step.
Mary Ann, please.
Thank you. I'm not sure if this is a great opportunity to ask any questions.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
This is kind of along the line of what Cassandra's wondering about. We're talking about not wanting to label what, in essence, is the lowest 5%. So we're changing labels from persistently lowest to focus schools.
Priorities.
Priorities, excuse me. What happens now with the schools that have been labeled under the PLA list and have, in essence, been punished for it? Do we retract any of that or are they just stuck?
They continue, they all have school improvement plans. They continue to implement those school improvement plans as they are. The difference is that the consequences as far as what happens to them if they continue to stay on that list, those are no longer in play.
So what about the PLA schools that have been taken into the EAA?
Schools, schools that were labeled on the 2010 and 2011 PLA list are still, and Deborah Clemmons is over there, they're still under the jurisdiction of the State School Reform Officer, and they're in their pipeline of interventions following the state law. So they're, the first cohort is ending their first year of implementation, the second just ended their first year of planning. Now, this is, the priority schools become the third cohort going into the state intervention, but now we have the federal intervention overlaid on top of that as well. It provides more support, some more money for the Title I schools, but those first two cohorts are still implementing according to state law, making their transformations. So the schools that have been placed in the EAA, that's, again, following the procedure laid out in state law, and Deb can speak more extensively on it, but they are in there. That was the consequence and the outcome for them.
So there is PLA schools, not as priorities.
We have changed the label for all schools, they're all priority schools at this point.
And there will be each year, I mean, overall, it's a good thing that you'll see schools that are on the right track to improving, so they'll pull themselves out. And, you know, there's a certain irony that, because it's a metric, that if others are improving quicker than you're improving, you could fall into a bottom, so-called bottom 5% while someone else is moving out. And, you know, one thing I think is very positive about some of these is, is I've seen a lot of principals, teachers, and superintendents saying they want to see where they are, partly because they want to know how close they are. You know, am I close to the bottom 5%? Am I close to being a focus school? You know, if you're in the 11th percentile of the gap, you're, you know, a whisper away from, a whisker, I guess is the right expression, away from being labeled, quote, focus. So I think they're, they're looking at this and taking it very seriously about what can we do. It's not just because they've been labeled, it's also because we want to make sure we're on the right slope here.
And the schools should be looking at that list on a consistent basis because it is a risk to fall.
I think the beauty of the list is that it, that schools should be looking at that on an ongoing basis because as these schools cohorts improve, and they are improving, then that, then it opens up slots for other schools to fall down. So it's always, it's good to look even beyond the 10%. In fact, we, we use that as a way to do some kind of early planning with schools.
Because Deb brought in, in a conference held, I forget what month.
In April.
The top.
Everybody that was on the list that was at the 10% level. And we brought them in and said, it was sort of like an early warning to say, sort of look, start looking at your data, you might wind up on this list, you might want to start working with your schools. So it's a good thing to do that. And then we said all along that they would be in this process for a minimum of four years, a first year of planning and three years of implementation before we would make, you know, some, some serious call for the next level of accountability.
Yes, Kat?
I really like the focus schools designation. We talk about the achievement gap, and we always talk about it between schools. And I've been in schools over the years where they knew that the students were not achieving the same level as the high achieving students. And they were considered a very good school. So I think it's really good to focus on this achievement gap within the good, the good schools, who might, not might be labeled anything but good. So I think this is a big step in our direction to get this information so that they can change it. There's something wrong with teachers' expectations and all other things. It's really interesting that we're doing this, I think it's very valuable. I hope it'll be regarded.
Well, and let's move into another valuable category, which are the reward schools.
So there were 286 reward schools identified, 143 of those are high performing, the other 143 are high progress. It does not yet include our schools beating the odds. We're running that list now and then we hope to come back to all of you in a subsequent board meeting like we have for the last two years and highlight some of the schools after we have a chance to do our interviews and, and those sorts of things. 179 different districts had at least one reward school and a number of, all the ISDs as well. And again, I won't read this, but these are some of the most common, commonly represented ISDs and districts. In terms of our adequate yearly progress results, for this last year, 606 of our schools did not make AYP, that's about 18%. 2,722 made AYP. The reason for that was the change in targets to reflect the new cut scores, so that's why those, these percentages are actually slightly better than last year. The change, though, was at the district level. 262 districts did not make AYP this year, that's almost half of our districts. And 166 of those did not make AYP because they didn't meet their graduation rate targets for their subgroups. So that was a big impact for districts. And as far as education, yes. Because the system was not adjusted for new cut scores, the grades went down. Because the system was not adjusted for new cut scores, the grades went down overall. They're actually probably more reflective of schools' performance now than previously, but this was the impact of the new cut scores. So 201 schools received an A. That's down from last year. You can see the shift. More schools receiving a C. And actually, four schools unaccredited this year. And then if I could just take one moment, and I'd like to thank my staff, if that's okay. I'd like to specifically thank Chris Janzer, Carla Howe, Danielle Ledoux, Alexander Schwartz, Mac Gleeson, and Dave Judd is our director. We're supported by Deborah Johnson and Tina Flut and Emily Taylor. We got accountability out three weeks sooner this year. And that is because of heroic efforts on the parts of my excellent, phenomenal team. I also want to thank Jaclyn Dennis and Shannon Vlasis, who helped us produce things that actually look good. Like, you know, we're data people, so we're like, hey, look, it's a, it's a nice, no. They helped us make it look appealing. SEPI and the Red Cedar Group worked hard to get this into the portal, again, pulling a lot of long nights. And then finally, accountability is only the first part. Supports were next. So because we moved the accountability release up, Deb Clemmons and Hershop and Linda Forward and Hershop had to dramatically escalate their improvements. So both Deb and Linda, shout out. And then Stephen Best and Joy and New Ross pulled an incredible effort to make us ready to support schools after we held them accountable. So it was, it was an exciting couple of months. And we appreciate the time to talk to you all about it today.
And that, as you know, always takes great leadership. And I was going to give kudos to Vanessa. She has been working hours and days and weekends on getting this done with her team. So it always takes a good leader to get that through. And of course, then you're led by Joseph, which always helps. So congrats to both of you and the team.
Great. Eileen, please.
I just want to say a quick thank you for taking us through. A quick thank you for taking us through so many slides so carefully and clearly. This has got to be a benchmark moment for the board because I actually understood, well, maybe it was just a benchmark for me. But I certainly understood what you were talking about. And then I want you, the two of you, to define every math and science class that you took so that we can figure out exactly what skills are required. Not right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Eileen. I was, John, please.
Does it take algebra two to do these scatter plots here? Is this analysis, Joseph, of the no-real pattern in terms of focus schools, is this new today? Or is this, because this is very important to somehow, I don't know how we do it, to get internalized and communicated with those in the field. Because I know, you know, local board members, others are jumping to conclusions about why we're a focus school. And this understanding that there is no pattern or no type of school is being discriminated against is the first step towards, to Cassandra's excellent point, how do schools proactively then deal with their school communities and parents about what it means to be a focus school and what we're doing about it?
Two responses to that. First, this, these analyses were shared with the focus schools on webinars. So they have seen the data. But second, I don't want to overstate the concerns that people have had. We have had several people who have these concerns. But there were many, many schools that we called and said, your school is identified as a focus school. Said, yep, we know. We know we have an achievement gap. We know we need to do something about it. Thanks for the identification. We even had some people saying, thanks for the identification because this gives us a way forward. So we had many schools who were actually ready and willing to receive the designation, even though it's a little difficult to do so, simply because this says, now I have data. Now I know where my achievement gaps are. I know where they're the biggest. I've got this diagnostic information. Thanks for providing this to us. So the information is not new. There are some people who are still coming at this with some of these assumptions that are disproved by the data. But there were many schools who are not jumping to those conclusions as well.
We have, on the website, mi.gov backslash focus schools. There is a policy brief written up with all of what we just said basically written down. There's also a PowerPoint with it scripted, and it's included in a couple of different webinars. So if anybody, again, that's why we wanted to point out the resources because we would like to continue to get the message out about some of this. But we always can use Good Water Carriers or people to help point. You know, our website is not exactly everybody's first place to go in the morning when drinking their coffee. But maybe now it would be.
I think even with the webinars, it probably would, would help in the spirit of what John. I know we had media briefings. We had briefings with the associations. But maybe a re, another, another shot at that, another email, especially the associations that are helping us communicate. Kathy's been in the ESP. The more we can get folks to understand where they can go clearly, and they have the best, the best tool, I think it might be worth a repeat. But as you said, to John's point, you know, the focus schools had this stuff right away. And that's why I mentioned earlier, when I say right away, it still takes a while for it to sink in. And so I think some of those even that did go out and say, well, it's because of this or that, it is time to take a deep breath and say, you know what? We're thinking of this a little differently now, and we're going to improve. We talked, thank you very much, first of all. Appreciate it. And can we move to, since our guests are here with Dee? Is it Dan?
I assume there were a lot of questions up at the EIS. Really quick. Not even a question. I have questions and so on. I'm going to hold them until some other time, just because I.
No, no, please. Don't, don't mean to inhibit that.
I want to, I want to hold them until a different time just because I think this is really a moment that we should all be celebrating a little bit. It's a lot of work to be done still. Like, it's not perfect. Nothing is. But boy, oh, boy, this, such a significant step forward for us as a state. And I would, I just, I want to make sure that while you guys are here at the table, that that gets said and your hard work gets acknowledged, the hard work of everybody involved in this gets acknowledged. And kudos goes out to everybody for working on this and for all the work that will come in order to kind of respond to it, right? To get your school off the focus school list and so on and so forth. Really good stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I talked to John, and we thought, in order to accommodate so many of our guests, we would move to item D, which is the one on teacher prep institution performance. And then after lunch later, come back to C. Appropriately, we didn't know exactly how long these would take. Does that sound okay to the board? That's. And D is the one on the report on the 2010-11 teacher preparation institution performance scores. And by guests, I just mean, of course, our, our friends in higher ed. Many of them are here today. And with that, let me just, let me just turn that over to Sally at this point. I think Steve, sorry, Steve, I think I threw you a curve there. And you were waiting for, come on up, please. And as you know, this is a, we asked the board to receive this report. It's not an approval issue as such, but it's important. I think it's important, more than important and required federally, but something that we want to share with you at this time.
Okay, so this is a report that, as Mike said, you do receive annually. And its purpose is that we do have to comply with the Higher Ed Act, Title II, Section 208. And this does require that all states have to identify at-risk or low-performing teacher prep institutions. And this is one of the ways that we provide an accountability system that assures that we do have quality preparation for our P-K-12 teachers. And again, it also provides information about the TBIs and about their, and about their ability to prepare teacher candidates, not just the colleges of education. So it's a broader performance than that. So with that, let me go turn it over to Flora, and she'll guide us through the presentation with her capable staff. Do you want to introduce them?
Yes. To my right is Ms. Leah Breen. And she has been newly appointed as our Assistant Director and Supervisor of Professional Preparation and Development Unit. And we stole her from field services. So Mike Racking might not be very happy, but we are. And also Dr. Stephen Stegen, who really works with our Department Tech to prepare these reports. They spend the better part of the academic year working on this and getting up for it and work with the institutions throughout the year. So the institutions are aware of what their score is. It's not a surprise to them today. So we have been working with them and getting this information together. And I also want to add to what Sally said about looking at this as an indication of the overall ability of the institution to prepare teachers that are quality teachers and candidates are ready to go into the field of teaching. And it does highlight the collaboration that's needed between the College of Education and the other colleges within the institution. So it's not just about the College of Education. As we look at the status of our teacher preparation institutions, and we are going to be kind of changing our terms or transitioning to Educated Preparation Institutions. But for this report, we have kept it at TPIs. But you will, in the future, be seeing EPI, which is Educated Preparation Institution. They're designated on a basis of a 70-point scale. And I'll discuss those 70 points a little bit later on in another slide. But they are identified as exemplary. And that score is a 63 or higher. Satisfactory is a score of 56 to 62. At-risk is a score of 52 to 55 points. And then low performing is a score that's less than 52, 52 points. And here are the institutions as they fall out in terms of the designation and which institutions are in each category. We have the exemplary. And you can see there are a range of institutions from small to large, private and public. And the same for satisfactory. And then we look at our at-risk institutions. And you have three that fall into the at-risk category that we will be working with those institutions, have been working with them, Saginaw Valley, Hillsdale, and Western Michigan University. And then low-performing institutions. We have Lake Superior State, Adrian, Olivet, and Finlandia. And again, we do work with those institutions. And we do, as we encourage all of our institutions, whether they are in the exemplary or low-performing, to take a look at their data and see how they are doing and to seek continuous improvement. You know, just because you are exemplary or satisfactory this year doesn't mean that you can't slip down. So they need to be looking at their data to see where they may have some weaknesses and areas for improvement. As previously stated, the maximum point score is 70. And these are the areas that we include in that. The MTTC aggregate score, which is a three-year aggregate score, we award 30 points at the highest level. Program review status is 10 points. Program completion, and that's the, how you're getting your students through your program, pretty much retention. And that's 10 points. Candidate and supervisor surveys, 10 points. Diversity is five points. And then whether or not they are addressing state needs with regard to content areas such as special education, math, science, or oral languages, or career. And we, you know, need to look at some other ones. So that's five points. And then we look at the impact of the Michigan test for teacher certification. Because if you'll notice, that three-year aggregate pass rate accounts for approximately 43% of the score. So it is a big part and a significant part of that performance score. So depending on where you fall out with those scores on the MTTC, it could have a big impact on your ranking. The minimum passing score, scores were raised on about 45 content areas in 2008. And so what this means is as you look at, and Steve is the expert on explaining how you look at raising those scores for the minimum passing rates. But when you tend to raise those scores over a period of time, you will see some decrease across the state. So 2010-11 Performance Score Report is the first time for the full impact of the three-year aggregate MTTC at the higher passing rate. So the scores included in that are 2009-10, I mean, 2008-9, 2009-10, 2010-11. So for the first time, they have three years at those increased passing scores. And each year, other tests are reviewed, other content areas are reviewed to see whether or not those scores need to go up somewhat. So overall, it'll probably be like maybe 60 scores that have been increased since 19, I mean, since 2008. The overall state pass rate decreased by 4%, which is kind of to be expected. And then our TPIs, some have pass rates that are maybe decreasing, and some may have increased. So it's, it ranges. And again, well, this is the first year that we have TPIs that we have identified as in corrective level action three. And level one corrective action is the first two years that they are in the at-risk status. And we have certain things that they have to do in that corrective action level. That'll be the first time that they will do a self-assessment, take a look at their data, take a look at all the things involved in their preparation program, and then come up with a plan of improvement. What is, what are some things they can do to improve the program status? Level two corrective action is the first two years of low-performing status or beginning the third year in at-risk. So if you have not improved, then you will move down into that level two corrective action, which requires you to begin to take a look at possibly not admitting students into certain programs and continuing to do the plan of improvement. And level three corrective action is the most serious. It's beginning the third year's low performing or initially at-risk TPI that becomes a low in corrective action three by not meeting or not moving up into one of the other categories. So they would be beginning their second year as low performing. And corrective action level three does require the TPI to stop admission to all programs with MTTC scores below 80%. Programs must be phased out. And students will have four years to complete that particular program. Our staff will work with them to do that. We will ask them to submit the names of all of those candidates who are currently enrolled in those programs. And we do expect that they will complete the programs within four years. And you must understand that even though we, they phase out these programs, those students who complete the program are well-qualified to be Michigan teachers. They have to meet all of the standards. They have to pass the test. And it also doesn't mean that the institution completely eliminates the programs. They can still have those programs that can be used for other programs, other academic programs that they're using them in. It's just that they have not continued to meet the standards for teacher preparation. It also requires them to be reviewed by a committee of scholars that will be appointed by the Superintendent of Public Instruction. We will work with Superintendent Flanagan in terms of recommending names for that committee and getting that committee in place. They will make recommendations to the superintendent with regard to they feel like the institution has the capacity to continue, can improve, and can offer good quality preparation programs or recommend the rescission of their approval as a teacher preparation institution. The institution must also assist students to complete at other teacher preparation institutions if their approval is rescinded or if the student chooses to leave the institution. And as I said, this is the first year that we have TPIs in corrective action level three. There are two of those institutions. We have Lake Superior State University and Olivet College. In terms of Lake Superior State, we've been working with them to provide technical assistance. Started that back in the winter. The institution is in the process of reforming its program. They had a number of programs that had MTTC pass rates of less than 80%. And you can see those, English, economics, history, political science, and so on. I'll give you a minute to take a look at those. These programs will be phased out for purposes of teacher preparation. Olivet had content programs with MTTC pass rates of less than 80%. And those are listed here. And the institution, Olivet voluntarily discontinued some of their programs or did what they call put a freeze on them. And so they had already started the process of looking at certain programs and saying, okay, we need to make some changes. And so they are freezing those programs. They will have an opportunity to take a look at them, revise them, and eventually maybe resubmit them for approval. They also submitted a request to the superintendent for special consideration of six of those content area programs that had MTTC pass rates of less than 80%. And those included history, political science, health, emotional impairment, social studies, and language arts at the elementary level. And the superintendent approved three of those programs, political science, health, and emotional impairment, based on looking at some of the data and saying, okay, it looks like these programs would be solid programs. The institution should be given an opportunity to offer these programs and continue forward with them. with them. Content programs that are phased out because of the MTTC scores, they will not be counted in subsequent performance calculations. We didn't feel that it's fair to say, okay, you've gotten this big hit, and we're going to continue to use those scores. Those programs are no longer being offered, so those scores would no longer be valid for programs for identification of whether or not they are performing at a satisfactory level. The TPI must wait five years before applying for approval of any of those programs that we have said that they need to phase out. So that gives them time to take a look at those programs, look at our standards, and what do they need to do to work with those colleges and where that content is offered to make sure that they are addressing the standards. Hillsdale College and Finlandia have indicated that they will be phasing out their teacher preparation programs. We will work with them to do that. So they will no longer be teacher preparation institutions in Michigan. We've met with Saginaw Valley and Western Michigan Universities. They will be required to submit their self-assessment and their plan for improvement. And Adrian is continuing the implementation of its previously submitted plan for improvement. So we will continue to work with all of our institutions, and that is pretty much the highlights of the report.
I would just add that I met with both President McLean and President Corey, had real good meetings with our teams, and am very impressed with their plan and desire to get back on track and to hopefully in five years be able to restore those programs that have been taken out at this time. But very much appreciated their constructive approach to this. And in a way, you know, when you look at our last two items, this is kind of the higher education version of some of that, if you want to think about it that way. And we hope to improve it over the next year or so. Our team's working on that to have, kind of the way we've continued to improve the stuff related to local school districts and schools. Kathy, you had your hand up first, and then Richard.
Thank you for the report. I was shocked when I saw that the Central Michigan was listed for exemplary dissatisfaction. Because that's one of the biggest ones in Saginaw Valley and Western Michigan. That's our risk. That's so shocking. There are major teacher prep institutions. So are we doing anything?
Yeah, we are working with them. We've already met with them. We've met with Saginaw Valley, and we've discussed, you know, where their issues are. And it does go to them taking a look at all of the data points that they have to see where is it they need to focus, you know, and what can they do. So we'll get their plan of improvement and their self-assessment. They have six months to submit that to us, but we'll continue to work with them throughout that process, and the same for Western.
Students are there. Should be given, we want them to be trained and really be teaching. And that's really good. Did you want to?
May I follow up a little bit?
Sure.
With respect to Central Michigan and Eastern Michigan, if you notice the table that's on page five in the document, I'll just note for you, the impact for these two institutions, the impact for these two institutions really is in the area of the Michigan Test for Teacher Certification. Because last year, they had a 90% or 91% pass rate, they got full 30 points credit. This year, they moved to, I think it was 89%, so they dropped about 1 or 2% and lost five points, which moved them from that exemplary to satisfactory. So it had, that was the impact of the test process on those two institutions. And likewise with Saginaw Valley and Western Michigan, they also saw a drop in their MTTC pass percentages with then a subsequent loss of some points or five points in those areas.
And that made the difference.
Right.
And the programs that were in the third year, some of them just have hardly anything left.
Well, they-
They're phasing out other programs. The programs that didn't succeed, hardly anything left for them to be saving business.
Well, they have an opportunity to focus on the things that they do well. And some of those other programs, they may have only had one or two people in them. You know, they may have been very small programs, and the impact of the MTTC is if you have three people in a program and two of them don't pass the test, okay, you've got a pretty bad passing rate. So it does impact those institutions.
It's one of the reasons in the appeal, Kath, from Olivet on the six programs, that three of them kind of partly fell into that category with just one, you know, a small number of students, and yet it seemed appropriate to try to give them an opportunity to continue there. This is one reason, and we're going to-
Hillsdale is closing out this program altogether. I didn't know that. I just did land in West Coast. Hillsdale is too.
Yes, they have indicated that.
Thank you. Richard, and then Eileen.
I noticed that a couple of the schools that are at-risk also have graduate programs in education for teachers' professional development. What implications does closing out the teacher program have for the graduate programs that may be offered for teachers, whether in education or perhaps in another subject?
Well, if they're in content, the graduate program, if they're doing initial teacher preparation in the graduate program, that's included in this. So it's possible that some of those programs may be impacted by this, you know, with regard to the content. Just depends on what the content areas are.
And that wouldn't occur until they move through a period of three years into this corrective action level three. So if they're at-risk, it won't have an immediate impact on closing things down, but if they continue in that process, then in those content areas like if it's English or math, then those graduate programs would also phase out because they're tied to the content area.
Eileen, please.
I just wanted to-
Yeah, please.
I was glad to see Barry Blum University on the satisfactory list. Now, that was really good to see.
They worked hard at that.
Yeah. I'm proud of them.
Eileen, please.
This, I've been talking about teacher quality and so the board members for a long time, so Flora, I'd like to congratulate all of you on moving this conversation to action, because I know it's been very hard and it's taking a lot of time and energy.
Thank you.
My concern, of course, because I'm always impatient, is what this says for the next step. I'd also like to know that there still are three UP teacher prep institutions, always a concern. Two of them are exemplary, which is good, because seeing one of those go in that part of the state is hard. But the National Council on Teacher Quality said that in their sampling in 2006 of ed schools across the country, that only about 15% of the ed schools were teaching the coursework that teachers needed to be able to teach reading well. And in 2008, they said that only 13% of the ed schools were doing that for math. I watched Step Ball's Math Academy a couple of weeks ago and was struck at how simple and clear and gripping and involving quality math education can be for students, and recognize that the ed schools in Michigan are trying to go to a better spot. But what I am curious about is how we get college and career standards and that in-depth, involved, engaged student learning to translate with these performance scores and the caliber of kids who are going into our ed schools. How we get the teachers that we need in Michigan, granted, we're hiring very few of them. But what's the next step in this conversation? And how do we find out whether the Council on Teacher Quality's assessment is accurate for Michigan ed schools? Because I don't know who can do that kind of evaluation or investigation. It just seems to me that this is showing a very high level of engagement from the staff on fixing things that are wrong. The question is, how do we help ed schools go to what we know Michigan needs? And, you know, what are the steps for that? Thanks.
Well, I would say there's a couple of things that we've got a work group that is beginning to tackle some of the issues that came up in the study group that you all had about five years ago. And some of those things have been implemented, like the three-tier evaluations, the three-tier licensure system, but there's some of these things that we still need to be working on, one of which would is to take a look at this performance score and see how we can improve it, because there are some of the components that go into that really don't differentiate among institutions. So it's probably a weak measure as far as whether or not it's helping to differentiate. So we will be taking a look at the entire performance score this year to see how we can strengthen it and have it be more telling of what we need to, for teacher institutions to be doing. But we're also taking a look at how do we support the institutions at the, with the students they're accepting into the program? And then what do we do before the students actually go into, before they go into student teaching? Do we have another benchmark at that point? Before they are approved by the institution to come to us for certification, are there other benchmarks? So we're looking at trying to look at three or four different benchmarks we can put that will help us from the recruitment all the way through the entire process as the person goes through the teacher program to really make sure that they are getting the skills and the education they need. We are talking also about, we do need to accompany the content assessments. We need a test for pedagogy. And it may not be a typical test, you know, pen and pencil test, but, and we're not the only state that's struggling with that. Many, many states are trying to figure out, okay, how do we know if you've got the content? Do you really turn that into good instruction? And some folks are looking at portfolios, bring me copies of your lesson plans, bring me videotapes of how you've instructed students. So a lot of those things are under the discussion as we start to move the needle.
And our plan is to bring that discussion to the board sometime in this coming year. We're not clear on, we want to do this right. We want to do it with our partners in higher ed and with folks in the field. Because we still graduate about 6,000 a year and hire about 3,000. So there's a point where even though we went through a fairly rapid replacement because of incentives in the retirement system and all that, is still a steady, a steady hiring of teachers. And, you know, 3,000 at a time, kind of what we're inferring in some of the earlier items. The better we can get at that, the quicker teachers are ready for this new accountability that they're in from day one. So it's not just for that reason, it's for the better instruction and for kids' learning. But I think it's also unfair to teachers to put them in a system with this high accountability if they don't feel as prepared as they should be. Having said that, you know, one thing I almost have to always remind myself of, so I'd say today, we do have, as a team of 32 institutions, we have among the best in the country. So this is, states are struggling with this. This isn't, you know, we're actually, in many respects, far ahead of other states in terms of what we have with institutions that are represented. But things are changing quickly, and we need to adjust to that. So I've asked this team, and we're going to work on it directly at SOUPSC Group also, to have something ready so that we have a different measure in place for next year. And I think we've got to go through some federal stuff for that, too.
Mike, I would just, I'd just like to add that I'd like to inspire on this as opposed to punish. And the concern that I have is that as we switch to Common Core and the kind of in-depth instruction we're looking at, we may see early retirements from teachers who, you know, are just not up to that challenge. Given that there's supposed to be a bulge of retirements anyway, it could be that we'll be hiring more Michigan teachers ourselves in the years to come. And I can't tell, looking at those national studies, how many of our institutions are up to snuff on this and how many aren't. I would like to lead them in, you know, some sort of discussion that says, gee, can we go there because our teachers need to have these skills?
We're starting with the work group that Sally referred to, and we'll go from there. But I think it'll be a major item, if not maybe, depending on agenda planning, maybe an entire board meeting at some point in this next year. I think Dan was next.
Really looking forward to that conversation, to having this come back before us so we can have a much more in-depth conversation about it, really critically, a critically important issue. A couple of quick questions and/or comments. So it occurs to me that this, the last criteria here listed in the memo, teaching success rate points to be determined, is one that is, I don't know if it's right to call it more important than others, but certainly it's a measure that is a little bit more of an outcome measure as opposed to an input, and so might be more valuable. When do we, and obviously assumes that any kind of an educator evaluation system actually is measuring the right things and effective and so on, so subject to all of that. Do you expect to begin to use this as soon as they're, like, in a year and a half, two years? Or how long before kind of that evaluation, the educator effectiveness system starts to influence this? One. And two, I'm curious about, so the survey of candidates, which is done right now, right after student teaching, is there another survey that's administered after a teacher has actually been teaching for a year at a district or two years to reflect, you know, so have an opportunity to reflect back on how effectively I feel like my institution prepared me for this now that I've been at it for a year on my own?
Well, we've had discussions about those things that you're asking about, and that's part of the work that this group is going to be tackling, and to take a look at those principal surveys and outcomes, and how do we involve the educator effectiveness piece in this? Because as you heard Vanessa say when she was at the table, we do have this connection now between the educator, their personal identification code along with the student identification code, and then we can track that back to the institution. So that work group is going to be looking at all of that and how we revise this performance score to more effectively reflect those kinds of things. And right now, no, they don't do another survey after being out a year or two, but that's-
And as Flora said, that's one of the things the group is talking about, is you've got the afterglow, you've just finished your college program, and everything looks wonderful. So, but it's after you've got some experience in the classroom, after those first couple or three months, then you start to say, wow, I wish I would have learned this, this, or this. So one of the things we've talked about, it'd probably be a more informative survey if we had some lag time between right after graduation from the program and actually had some experience in the classroom. And Vanessa, again, has just been a great leader in looking at the whole link between the evaluation system and the teacher prep institutions, and cautioning us that we don't have consistent data among the districts on their evaluation system. So we've got a lot of variation in a continuum of quality and how they're conducted. So we're going to need to wait until we have some data that is much more systemic and much more statewide and reliable before we start to draw some conclusions to what that means. But we will have, I mean, we do have the data right now, we just need to be cautious on how they get used.
Really quick follow-up on that last piece. So this is off the top of my head, I haven't had a chance to think about it, but it occurs to me that to the extent that we'll be asking teachers to be subject to that same educator effectiveness system right away, that it's probably fair to ask our preparation institutions to be subject to it right away, with the caveat that both are protected somewhat by the fact that we would be using multiple years of measures before making decisions, right? So you use a three-year rolling MTTC average in order to make a decision here. So educator effectiveness evaluations, if before anything happens, there's three years' worth of data, whatever that, call what it is, or what it could be, that offers some degree of protection. But I would hate to think that it's appropriate for teachers to be subject to it and for the preparation institutions who are preparing them to not be subject to it. If we're going to ask our teachers to be subject to it, then let's ask the EPIs to be subject to it at the same time.
And we have just gotten the first year's data, and so I think that's well said, that that doesn't mean we have to wait forever, but I think we've internally thought we need to make sure we're really careful about how we release that before, and how it gets used. So I think we will need at least a couple of years' data, so maybe in another year we'll take a look at that.
And the other thing, Dan, we talked about in our meetings on this, is that one other issue that, agree with the spirit that you just described, one issue would be, how long has someone been out of an institution, and at what point could we say, hey, there's culture and all other kinds of things that have taken over for this and not the institution? Those are things that we're going to be thoughtful about. Those are things that we're going to be thoughtful about before we bring them to you, and then get your reactions.
And I forgot to say that I got the black and white memo last night. I'm ready.
She's color coordinated.
I don't know what Sally did, but-
Well, thank you, Flor, for doing that. I appreciate it. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John, what do you think for amount of minutes? We'll break for lunch, and it's 12:30 now. What would the board?
We're at 1:15.
1:15, so our guests, if you're-